See, the national is what, in October?
National.
No, the national.
Oh, I know. The national cities?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually it's in October and November. San Antonio isn't in November.
Have they said a date for the?
For ours? Yeah, it's on election.
Hammer City Council, public hearing agenda, March 8, 2022, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Wells.
All right. Number one.
In ordinance to amend the budget for fiscal year 2021-2022, Lacey Landrell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. As she said, we're here to amend the beginning fund balances on the budget. This is something that we do every year. At the time the budget is prepared, we're based off of estimates. Once the audit's complete, we have final numbers and we generally come to you guys in March. Pull the slides up, one second. So what we're talking about is on this slide, the boxed in red, the beginning balances, those are the numbers that we're talking about. So now that we have the actual numbers, this is the line item that we're going to be amending in the budget. So this is a table where you can have a side-by-side comparison. It's a little easier to read. So we're going to do Fund 100. We're increasing that as was 3 million was our estimate. We're amending that to 4.1. The sales tax fund, we estimated at 3 million and we're asking for the amendment to be at 5.5. And that's really the large part of that is because the sales tax have been so impressive. And then you'll see each one, 205, where it's going to be a net change of negative 13,000. Downtown Development's been a net change of 41,000. Fund 208, the grant match is an increase of 226. Fire and police marriages, those increases, of course, are going to be because property taxes came in more than what we expected. Department of Motor Vehicles, this is the fund that we're going to, we need to close at some point, since we do not have that contract with those guys. And then Fund 710 is the Workers' Comp Insurance Fund that were, are over the 5%. Anything more than 5% has to come before council for your approval. And so that's what these are. The ones that did not meet that mark are not on the slide. So if there's any questions? That is attachment four on the agenda. May be easier for you guys to see.
Is that Department of Motor Vehicles? That remainder balance, that's just getting moved into the general fund?
Yes.
Actually not reflected on the new consolidated budget. That's not, that move is not reflected yet because we haven't closed that fund. All that's reflected here is that you're changing the beginning fund balance from what was estimated to what the actual was on July 1st. So the closure of that fund would happen during this fiscal year and that would happen within the next budget.
What Sam been asking for, for the last couple of months? Breaking down, breaking down the budget, breaking down the finance for the city? When you think you'll have that prepared, where you can present it to us?
So we just finished closing the books for February today. I have no chance to do an analysis on that yet. If you'd like, I can come to the next meeting with it.
We already provided the report that was requested, though. That was provided several weeks ago.
Ms. Lacey, please, please, I'm not going to go through this tonight. No, what it is, I think we was asking for a breakdown and this throughout other cities do it, the parish do it, we just want a complete breakdown of what are money being moved to and what's going on with the council. And this, this was, this was lacking. The city councilmen's, we have a great part to do with the budget. If we don't know where the money at, how could anybody else know where the money at? And it's not our money. And that's who we need to make clear all the time, it's the citizen money. So that's why I'm asking about it. If something should have been started, but it's never took place, and that's why I was asking you, Ms. Laura.
I have no problem.
Okay.
Providing, if you ever have questions, I have an open door policy. You can call me, email me if you have questions you need to help understand, just give me a call.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Laura.
We're not done yet.
Ms. Laura, I do have a question. The Workers' Comp, General Library Insurance, so we budgeted 110,000, but we have brought in 244,000?
Well, some of that is due to the audit entries at the end of the year. That's a big part of that.
So why, I'm just, I?
You didn't spend as much?
Yeah.
You didn't spend as much as what was budgeted?
Okay.
And once the audit's complete and all the numbers are fleshed out?
Gotcha.
That's kind of where we landed. Okay, so our next slide, this is the good news part. Sales tax is coming in and actually, I'm going to hand out this for you.
Thank you.
So what you're seeing is the sales tax for the year. The top is FY '22, the bottom is FY 2021, if you want to compare. If you can look on the city received on the top chart, that's kind of where we are now and we are 5 million above what we budgeted.
So Ms. Laura, just ask your question. So we can't get this on a projector for everybody in the audience to see?
Unfortunately, I did not think about that when I was preparing the slides, but we can certainly do that next time.
All right. Thank you.
I just wanted you guys to kind of see where things are. And so what we're doing tonight is asking for a $4 million increase to the budget because we still don't know where the year's going to land out with all the inflation and all those kind of things. So I would rather err on the side of caution. It's easier to come and say we have more money and that we can do things and to say we need to take money away. But of course, we're going to monitor this each month and keep you guys abreast. But so what we're doing tonight for the budget, we're asking for a $4 million increase in sales tax revenue, so we can have some of this reflected.
So when we, if this passes and we increase the sales tax, sales tax estimated to be 25.5 million, then that leaves us an ending fund balance in sales tax of 7 million? Is that, am I reading that right? If, if we get what we think we will, is that, okay. So that's a very large ending fund balance. So I guess that 5 million is just going into our ending fund balance? Is that?
That's where it's going to end up anyway.
Okay, so it's not budgeted, it's just, it's showing as the end.
We're just recognizing that revenue.
Okay.
Because of that whole 5% variance.
I see. Yeah. In order to move it or allocate it to something, we'd have to have a separate ordinance and budget amendment?
This is not appropriating, it's just recognizing the revenue.
Thank you, that's the right word, appropriating, yes.
There's no appropriation, it's just recognizing that revenue.
So if it stays where it's at, does, do you get a penalty if it's, if it's more than 5%? Or is that just a rule of thumb, they would like it to be that? Or what's, what's the pros and cons?
The budget gap is the 5% variance, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And so what we're doing here, we're just recognizing that additional revenue. We are not allocating that to spend by no means. You guys make the appropriations, but we do need to recognize that revenue to keep it within that 5% range.
And if sales and cr, sales tax stay high, we would need to amend it again if it's over 5%?
Correct.
If it changes within the last, like, month or two of the fiscal year, we don't receive that until, like, these sales tax figures that you're looking at and what's on your chart, you'll see, these are represented by the month of when the sales take place. So the ones that we actually just got in happened in January, sales that were in January, but we literally got them yesterday. So because it takes a month for everybody to report their sales tax after they've received it, they report it and then we get the deposits. So because of that delay in actually receiving the funds and knowing what that number is, you can't really amend the budget after the budget year has closed. We'll keep a close eye on this and in two months potentially come back with another amendment.
Is there any questions? We're still not done. So on this slide, this, I believe this is slide five for you guys. What we're asking for is to add funds for the housing study. During the budget, we already had the $50,000 set aside for it and the proposal has come in at the $88,000 number. So we're asking for an additional $38,415 to go to line item consultant services 100, 1500, dash 520124, so that we can go ahead and move forward with that housing study. Any questions? So finally, if all these amendments pass, this is what the new ending balances are going to be in that box of red. And then because that's not so easy to see, we have a table for comparison for you as well.
Certainly good news.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if there's no more questions, we are seeking your approval. Oh, no, this is introduction, sorry. I'm going faster than the process.
Any other question from anyone on the council? Anyone from the public?
Just one quick, quick statement, and this is all very, very good news. Regarding the housing study, the 88,000 that the original proposal, what the proposal came in at, we had a Zoom meeting last week with Civic. They are sharpening their pencils at our request. The directive was to come as close to the 50,000 as we possibly can. So they've gone back and they have until the 11th to come up with a final number. So that number, that gap will be closer than the 30-something thousand. So we hope to get as close to 50 as possible can.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Public here, item number two.
In ordinance, excuse me, in ordinance to amend?
In ordinance to amend the Hammond Unified Development Code to add the suburban highway overlay district, Jeffrey Lewenberger.
This is a text amendment to the UDC for, in section 14, dash 5364, in article 6.3, to revise the build two areas for the primary inside street. So, build two areas in the zoning districts. So this has been talked about at a length at the planning commission meeting. We finally had a hearing and vote on February 3rd and basically the decision was made that we want the commercial suburban highway overlay district to run along the major arterials that are defined in the major, major street plan that we have as the parish. And that includes, you'll see in the list in the ordinance there of the streets that that would include. And basically, there's a map also that was in the packet that shows where that all, where that would lie to. I do want to propose a change because it was brought to me and I do apologize because I did not send a screenshot to get this up on the big screen, so I don't want to ruffle any feathers with that because that was definitely my fault. And I have copies for everybody, I left them in the back of my chair. But basically, and I'm going to go back and get them here in a bit, but basically, the original ordinance read that Southwest Railroad Avenue from the one-way pair all the way to the city limits, well, since Southwest Railroad changes names after the interstate, we just want to make sure that that railroad avenue and Veterans Avenue is included in that overlay district. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to run back and get that copy of it so I can at least hand it out so you can at least see that written. And again, I apologize for not getting that on the big screen, but basically, the planning commission just wants to make sure that, we've had several, or, variances come through for, to try and get the build two lines. And just to kind of clarify what a build two line is, we have setbacks in our UDC, we also have build two lines in our UDC. The setbacks mean that you can't build, that's the closest you can build to the road. So if it's a 25-foot setback, that means you can't get any more than 25 feet closer to the setback. We also have build two lines and the build two lines means that the building has to be positioned up to a certain point. So the majority of our ordinances say 0 to 15 feet, so all buildings have to be at that 15-foot line. So the reason for doing that is to encourage walkability and just scalability in the, in the city, so we don't have those, we don't have vast parking lot, I mean, just to make it a pedestrian, or a human scaled environment. And it's what several ordinances do around the country, so. But we want to make sure that in the suburban areas that they have ample room to work with their site plan design. One of the stipulations that we did keep was we still wanted a build two line requirement in this and we put that at 60 feet and, I believe it was 60, 65, yeah, 60 feet. And the reason for that is that way they can at least have a row of, two rows of parking in front with a drive lane to access those parking. And also with that in mind was the big box stores, you realize, are setback really far, which also creates an issue with scalability in the side. So an ordinance like this would still encourage there to be out parcels in front with those buildings pushed up to the front for the scalability of the city. So that's basically what this ordinance is doing. It's been talked about at the planning commission for a very, very long time. We tried to include some landscaping provisions to make sure that we're also keeping within the character of the city, but other than that, this will basically create an overlay district along the major arterials within the city.
Quick question for you, Jeffrey. I know that it was asked by Councilwoman Gonzalez, if I'm not mistaken, for this to be publicized in the paper and I think Councilman Steve Leon came right behind it and asked him to make sure that we be publicized in the advocate as well, knew if this was put in the paper or not?
I know it was asked for, I can't, I don't recall the newspapers, but I know that we, you had requested that we send out public notifications to, to people. By local and state law, that's not required and just, we already come out of pocket from the planning department to send out notifications just for our planning commission cases, which is just a handful of people around the area and this would just, this would include hundreds of people. And so you can put that stipulation on, through the ordinance, but I can just forewarn you that it gets, it gets expensive and very tedious at staff.
I don't think it was so much so that we wanted to send actual, you know, envelope notice to everyone who it affects, but more so, people don't pay attention to our agendas often, especially when they see something that just reads ordinance to amend UDC, that no one knows what that means or if it affects their property. So I think what we had kind of, I thought we had said is, you know, can we have like press release, something in the paper that says, look, we're changing some of the setbacks to the commercial streets. In that way, we've, we've put out there that we're doing something. If somebody cares, then they can be here to tell us about it. Was this something that was brought up a couple of years ago with planning and zoning and it was voted on, it never came to us and then now y'all had it come up again?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other thing is your staff report usually tells us the way the votes go and I don't see that on your staff report.
So, and I'll take fault for this, this was my second planning commission meeting going together and I use the planning commission meeting reports and you'll notice in today's packet with our planning commission cases, we do include the actual council reports. For the staff report, it was the unanimous decision by the planning commission. That's the one major thing that's missing from?
Okay.
The planning commission and the council. And, and again, I apologize, falls on me for being new and not understanding. It was brought to my attention, we are now using those.
Mr. Jeffrey, off of what Ms. Gonzalez said, and I think what we was asking for that, and I know you stated that it's not required by the state nor the city, but the problem that we be having with the historical district, and it's pretty much like that, a lot of folks in the historical district didn't really know what was going on until they came to the meeting at the last minute. And so somehow we got to find a way to get it out to the people because this what going to take place. We can sit here and vote on this and yet, I didn't know, I didn't know. So, and what I done learned, it ain't like we've been going by the rules and regulations anyway. But these people are from Hammond, these people stay in Hammond, these people own property in Hammond. So we need to find some kind of way to get it out to the property owners because, you know, I'm in the process of getting a piece of property on University Avenue and I don't too much know what's going on myself. And I'm a city councilman, so just imagine that the people that have property along the lines that don't know nothing, you know, not reading the paper, not seeing what's on the agenda. So it's so much, so everybody need to know who all have property because, and then I would like to know why now? Why it's come up now?
Well, I'd say your second question first. The reason why it's coming up now is because you'll, you'll see in the, in the staff report that the case number dates back to 2019 and so it's just been like something that's been in the process over and, and I wasn't here, but I believe the planning commission just couldn't come up with a record, come up with a decision on how to go forward with it. If they did, it never made it to the council. I, I'm not sure. I do know that the recommendations that I came with them were different than the last time. It was a little bit more trying to keep within the character of the city while also trying to make sure we were ensuring what our ordinance intent was. So I know that that's the reason why it was put, the reason, a lot of the reason why it's put back on the agenda is because I think the planning commission mentions it almost at every single meeting that we, that they would like to see this variance, that this process takes place so they can stop issuing variances, but.
Jeffrey, can I jump in?
Yeah.
For two things? So one, what you just said is one of the most important things. So the planning and zoning commission has had a lot of variances requested for this and this actually gives more flexibility to the developers coming in. It increases their space that they have the opportunity to build in rather than saying you have to push up right close to the street. What we were having was a lot of the big box retailers or other retailers like that were coming in and saying, no, we don't want to be that close to the street, that's not how we build. We build typically with a large parking area in front of our building and then have maybe additional parking in the back. This kind of splits that difference and gives them the flexibility of having some parking in the front, but having more in the back. And it kind of meets that in the middle where the city's master plan says, let's try to move buildings up closer to the front to increase pedestrian, to increase safety, to make it feel more like kind of a downtown area. Here, they're right up next to the street. That's actually the requirement in a large portion throughout the city. And so what was coming before the planning and zoning commission, month after month after month, was a variance request, a variance request, a variance request. And that just means we don't want to do what the rules say we should do, we want to do something different and here's why. And so they kept analyzing those over and over and when you start to have a lot of those, you start to say, well, maybe we should change the rules. Because if this is the way that the development is going and this is the way that we look at it, we try to balance what the master plan is suggesting, what our unified development code says and where we should put those along the street. So they had originally passed a map, but even the map and the way that that motion had been carried out by the planning commission at that time was confused. And then later we tried to clarify about street boundaries and whatnot, could not reach a consensus about what had been done. So then they started over from the drawing board. Jeffrey came in, kind of took it from a different perspective, instead of looking at setbacks, look at build two lines and giving that flexibility. So in, in a lot of ways, this is actually probably welcome among the, the property owners because it gives them more flexibility. It loosens up their requirement of where to build.
Because there's nothing saying that they still can't push the building further to the street, it's just giving them, and we had a lot of, like Lacey was saying, we had a lot of people coming in, especially on the major highways out in the areas, and a lot of cities have this. And that's why in my, I had to report in the last council packet to try and take our comprehensive plans, try and take our major street plan and give some examples of what other communities similar to us do in those suburban areas because. because, yes, we, we want to keep it at a human scale and pedestrian friendly, and just made for people and not for cars, but at the same time, we have to recognize that these are in commercial suburban highways, and these buildings are gonna, want to be further away from the street, for safety reasons and for visibility reasons.
No, I was just saying, I think it was designed for a reason to bring the buildings to the front, for a look and a vision of whoever designed the, the planning of the city. And I don't think it's, I mean, you still have use of the land, it's just that you would have to put a parking lot in the rear instead of the front, from my understanding, and you're just trying to split the difference of the setbacks right now, and kind of have it to where they can put a, split a parking lot where some in the front, some in the back?
Correct, in the suburban areas.
Okay.
Not in the urban area, like, what, what our mass, what our major street plan considers the suburban.
Downtown, definitely.
Downtown, definitely, yeah. Huge advocate of downtown, I would never suggest something.
Well, this here had came up before, on here street, and you wasn't here at the time, and, Mr. Jeffrey, and he was trying to, he was trying to get the, the, the land owner and the development, he was trying to get them to bring the building close up to the front, and it was a major problem, because of this, because he was trying to get to bring the building up to the front, because they got a bank right there on the corner, and he was trying to get the building to line up with the bank and the parking in the back, and I think they was talking about the dumpster, the trash, they was, they brought all that up. But I see, one of the newest members that we have on, planning and zoning, I would like for to hear from him, and see what he say and what he think, because this what's going on, and we doing stuff like this here, I don't know, we need to start letting planning and zoning, some of the members got to come to the council meeting, and that's where they can explain it better, or, or different, because, I know, Mr. Ron Matthews, he in Sam District, and so, I just want to hear what you have to say about it.
Bottom line, this is a, a really good thing to do, is, does a couple of things. One, it does some house cleaning for us, with all these variances coming, coming before us, and, when you have the large retailers or the, or the larger buildings that, that come into the city and want to develop, most of the time, lots of the time, we run into, the city runs into a lot of issues with utilities and power lines and things of the sort that would prohibit them from being able to develop the way they want to develop. This, when we looked at it, we looked at it from a whole different perspective, and Jeffrey came and added a whole lot of positive things that could possibly happen by doing this. You, you're not gonna have, what it does, it prevents you from having this sea of parking in front of the buildings as you drive down these streets. It give more of a, of a homey feeling, I would say, a, a little look like somebody really planned out the way this development to look, and the word that Jeffrey used, it gives scalability to, to the development. That, that's, that's, that's the good thing. Secondly, I would say this, I do recall in the meeting where Councilwoman Gonzalez and Councilman Leon did ask for that, and I think that it would be the right thing to do, Jeffrey, for us, to advertise it in the local paper, the state paper, the Advocate, et cetera, because in the spirit of Hammond, and what we're doing, trying to do with the Housing Committee, what we trying to do with, to follow our, our master plan, and by the way, what this, what this request is, it definitely follows our master plan to the T, exactly what the master plan lays out. So, this is something that is definitely part of the plan of Hammond by doing this type of, of setback. So, I think that if we were to advertise it locally and statewide, and let the developers know that, hey, this is what's happening in Hammond, it would answer a lot of questions, and, and, excuse me, and secondly, what it would do for us is that, as we plan moving forward with the Housing Committee and other things that hope to be able to do with, with different types of development conferences, I know you haven't heard that before, but maybe down the road, we can have a developer conference, where we invite developers from all over the state, all over the region, to come to Hammond and see what Hammond has to offer, and by doing that, we'd be able to lay out our master plan, and when they do decide to come and develop and build in the city, it won't be any surprises for them. That's what most cities like Hammond and larger cities, they do. They use inclusion, bring the developers in and explain to them, this is what's going on here, so that there will not be any surprises. So, I think we should advertise, take it under consideration. By the way, this is nothing, you know, the, the house is not on fire tonight, it's nothing that you guys gotta do tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but it is something that we need to keep in front of us, as we move forward with other things we have in place with, with the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a good thing, this is a good thing
Yeah.
Throughout the city.
Thank you, Ms. Ron, but, yeah, I'd like to say that again, I mean, last meeting when we had this, two other council, councilwoman and councilman, both asked to be advertised, and I mean, you know, that's what the decision was, and that's what we asked for, so, I'd imagine, you know, next time I'd like to see that be done, and still be done today for this particular request and this issue, because I mean, that's why we're up here, we, we asked you to do it, and it was clear, nothing was done, and here y'all are, asking us to do something, the opposite way we asked, so, I mean, I think it was clear, and it, from here on out, I would like to see us ask one time, and, and it actually get done unless there's a problem, or at least notify us of the problem before the meeting.
And I apologize, I, I was thinking it was to all the property owners, I apologize.
I, I think it would be, the Daily Star is usually looking for info, I mean, we could, I would think that they would be happy to do a, a quick little article with your help, because obviously it needs explaining. The other thing, I, I was around listening to this original discussion in 2019, when they came up with streets in that original planning and zoning meeting, and I, it didn't sit well with me, and I want to say I very much appreciate your expertise in refining this, it's very obvious that you've put a lot of work and a lot of comparison to other areas, so I think it's a, a great thing. I just want, I think like we've all said, and I think everybody wants, does everybody know it's, what's gonna happen? My other question is, we have a lot of overlays, right? This overlay trumps that one, trumps that one, trumps that one, and then the question of, do they trump that one? And so, I see you have an area going into the DDD, probably, and I'm,
Yes.
I'm sure you've looked at those, and, and, but, have we thought through whether whose overlay trumps whose, and, and how that's y'all's problem as the planning and zoning to, to make sure we're not having issues?
The more restrictive
Okay.
Comes into play, right on, okay, I just wanted to make sure, that's usually how I work in it, and so, that's usually how it's written, and so...
Yeah, creating an overlay creates more restrictions sometimes, and, and, and we just need to make sure people know what's happening.
And we're hoping with, we're upping our game in GIS too, and so, we're hoping to have a good public information, because we do have a lot of overlays, and this is the first place, I mean, I worked for the city boundaries, and we didn't have this many overlay, they didn't have this many overlays, it was fifteen years ago, and then, so, I think we do need to have a good understanding of that for the public.
Good, okay.
I totally agree.
So, Mr. Jeff, since, Mr. Matthews say the house not on fire, so we can kind of put this, kind of delay this a little bit, huh? Since the house not on fire?
The house is definitely not on fire.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Well, I guess I, I'll make them, this is the introduction right here, are we voting on this right now?
No.
Okay, good deal, thank you. Good deal.
To call for public.
Definitely get a press release, I just need to get with the administration and see how we go about this.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine you don't, do you have to pay for that? I mean, it's just a press release, yeah, it shouldn't, yeah, it shouldn't really even cost us anything. Yeah.
Nah.
Perfect.
And just get the two papers, the Daily Star and Advocate.
Okay.
We may do like a one-page ad in the Advocate, because I don't know if the Advocate is as likely to pick it up as the Daily Star, but we can also push it out through Action News seventeen.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input? Could you give us your name and address, please?
Sure. Beazey Landry Sterling Properties, live at eight oh two West Thomas here in Hammond. Since it's gonna get delayed, I won't go into great detail, but, I will say, from a retail developer's perspective, it is welcome, and it is a, it is progress. The only bad thing I would say is, the sixty feet is just parking, so, if you have to put the landscaping in front, and you need a sidewalk for the building, which you need both, sixty feet is really, you're still gonna get variance requests for every small retail, it doesn't have, the huge one's gonna have to get a variance every time, because they're not gonna, the sixty feet isn't gonna work. But, for a small, one or two tenant deal, sixty feet, my, the parking that we're doing is sixty-two feet, is twenty and twenty and twenty-two drive aisle, and then you can assume a five-foot sidewalk and a ten-foot landscape, so, like, I would still need a variance for every one, just because my parking is over sixty feet. You can do eighteen and eighteen and twenty-four, which is sixty, but then you still have no room for the sidewalk or the, the landscape buffer out front, so, that's just my one little comment, I'll save any more of them for, for later, but, since we're delaying it, I figured that one comment would at least help maybe, as we, as we move forward.
Did you, did you go to the planning and zoning when they were discussing this and bring those points up?
Not this time, I did back in 2019, went multiple times, because this has been an ongoing issue for, for every, you know, almost every retail deal that's gone on since 2014, when this was, the UDC was created or put in place.
Well, I thank you for coming up, because these some of the things that we can take under consideration.
I'm happy to talk to anybody.
Yes, what he just said, because you know, I didn't even think about the sidewalk, and so, all these here can be taken under consideration and looking more into it, Mr. Jeffrey.
Yeah, I mean, you can't do it without a sidewalk, and the, one of the requirements is a landscape screen, and you, I mean, so it's gonna, you need at least five feet, but more, really, you need ten, just to be safe.
So, are you thinking seventy would do it?
I mean, seventy-seven was, is probably better, because you, again, you could do sixty or sixty-two in the parking, and then ten for the side, uh, landscaping, five for the sidewalk.
But, what about, and I, I don't know for sure if all of them have sidewalk, some of them might already have sidewalks, so we wouldn't...
No, I'm talking about the sidewalk at the building, so when you walk up to a building, the, between the parking lot and the, the actual building, the sidewalk, to go into the spaces.
I see.
We'll take it into consideration, I know there are different templates and different way out based on the retail developments, you know, whomever it be built, and what we trying to do is get, try to make it happen immediately, so that everyone can, can feel somewhat good about it, and I know there, we're gonna have air
Oh, yeah.
From time to time, so we will take a look at it, and drop the sidewalk setback and all of that, it's definitely a priority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, when I pulled those numbers, I just pulled them from what would our UDC set for parking and whatnot, but, I definitely agree with that, so I'm gonna go back and kind of do some different side designs and just see, just make sure the measurements that we have are spot on, because we don't want to be changing these all the time.
Yes.
Okay. We're out of work?
Good, thank you.
Anyone else from the public? All right, that concludes our public hearing, now we'll move right into our regular session, Hammond City Council's regular session agenda, April, I'm sorry, March the eighth, twenty twenty-two, roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Divatario?
Present.
Councilman Leon?
Present.
Councilman Wells?
Present. At this time, I'll ask Pastor Ron Matthews to come up and lead us in our prayer.
Let us pray, precious Father God, we thank you for your love, your kindness, and your tender mercy. God, we ask you to look down upon each and every one in this room, continue to cover all the individuals on this council, mayor, administration, and everyone who takes a part in the running of this city from day to day. Blessed in the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. At this time, with our pledge of allegiance, all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, at this time, we're down to our reports, mayor?
Last week, we had a great week with the Ladies High School Athletic Association at Southeastern, Top Twenty Eight, two local teams, congratulations to A-Mate Ladies, and also Ponchatoula, Ponchatoula Ladies for winning their brackets and their, and their divisions. Many, many thanks to Cola Tate and Tangi Tourism, Southeastern for facilitating the, the location, and Karen Hoyt with Louisiana High School Athletic Association, who, with her help, decided to get Top Twenty Eight back to Hammond, which is good for our city. Tangi Bowl Parish, City of Hammond, and many volunteers, Tangi Bowl Chamber with Melissa Borderline helped out all week long, it was a long event and very successful for the City of Hammond. K-Now competition this week is out at Chappaheila, it started today, tomorrow it'll finish up, sixty teams from around the state and the country. Also, and I don't know, I would imagine Carly's gonna mention the Easter egg at Clark?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, March twenty-eighth, we're gonna be stocking the catfish, with catfish, about two hundred and fifty pounds of catfish at Zomery Park, and also, on April second, from twelve to four, in Carly's district, she'll have a Easter egg hunt at Clark Park, so that'll be a good time for family and friends. Also, we have an Easter camp, taking applications for April eighteenth to twenty-third, ages six to sixteen, Cola Recreation Department at two seven seven five nine zero three. And, once again, we on our final debris pickup, if there are spots we haven't hit, please give us the addresses, and we'll try to make sure we take care of that. Also, the Oak Creek Drainage, the pipes for that project should be in, and that drainage project should be short, starting shortly, Mr. President.
Okay, I have one street for you, thirteen oh five Apple Street.
And I saw him in the community today, but, I don't know if they picked up everything on Brent Street, they still got the debris over there.
Say Brent?
Yes, off of Mississippi Street.
That's the one they made a skid steer, I think, too.
All right.
And, they got it? Okay, thank you, Bray.
Is there any more, mayor?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move down to council reports. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Albert Cusamano to come up, and he's gonna talk to us about the Purple Heart City.
Good evening, my name is Albert Cusamano, my address is three nine seven four four Weaver Lane in Ponchatoula. I know I'm a little bit out of jurisdiction, but, I'll come before you all to speak to you all about the possibility of becoming the second Purple Heart City in the state of Louisiana, what that entails, there's many different veterans organizations, as I'm sure you're aware of, I'm a member of four, VFW being one of the biggest ones I'm a member of, actually, I'm an officer at the post here in Hammond, but I'm also in the Military Order of the Purple Heart. Only requirements to be in there is, one, a veteran, two, you have to be awarded a Purple Heart. What they have, it's on the website, it's Purple Heart Trail, every state in the nation has entities, whether it be schools, businesses, cities, well, counties outside of us, where parishes, anything like that, VFW posts, American Legion posts, anything like that, can become a Purple Heart entity and put on this website. Now, of course, Hammond would be considered a Purple Heart City, because it's a city, so you're not, you're known as a Purple Heart City. It does not cost anything. The only thing it might cost is if you all vote on and would like to put one of the green, um, street signs that signify and distinguish Hammond being a Purple Heart City, like the first city in the state does, Ponchatoula, how they have it when you come off of I-55 right there, on Highway twenty-two, right by the cemetery, have the green sign, has the Purple Heart medal, and it says Purple Heart City. I looked it up on eBay, they cost less than twelve dollars each, so it's not overly expensive. Also, what I do when it becomes official, is I buy a flag, it's a Purple Heart flag that gets, that you all can fly wherever you want, and it states... It's a Purple Heart flag that gets, that you all can fly wherever you want, and it states, Purple Heart City, Hammond, Louisiana, written on it with the Purple Heart Medal and everything else. I create the proclamation, and the only requirements are, as the proclamation will state, is that you honor, thank, respect, and acknowledge Purple Heart veterans. That's it. That's the only, only requirement whatsoever. Once I make the proclamation and the council votes and says yes, you all sign it. You all can make two copies of it on your letterhead, however you wanna put it. One, I would need signed, so I can send that up to national, so that they could put it onto the website. The other one, you all are more than welcome to have to frame and put up in City Hall, wherever you all would like to put it, showing that you all have become a Purple Heart City. I know I just have a couple minutes, that's pretty much the gist of it, unless you all have any questions.
Any question from anyone on the council? Anyone from the public?
Well, I do thank you all very much for the time. Uh, just, if you all choose to do this, let me know. I'll draw up the proclamation and I'll send it to Ms. Lisa to be looked over by everyone, just to make sure that it's nothing that I haven't said, and we can move forward if you all choose to. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council reports?
I was gonna announce that there's, it's a little early, but the, the, it sounds like the first Veterans Breakfast that we haven't had in a long time is gonna be on, um, April twenty-eighth at the Kenny Center. So we haven't had those for a bit, so we'll announce it again when it gets closer, but we just got the email the other day about it. And, uh, and like the mayor said, the Easter egg hunt on April second, twelve to four in Clark Park. Yes.
Who emailed you about that?
Uh, I got, I'm on, it was through my work email, so I don't know how I ended up on it. The, the rec center, I guess, let me see. Ms. Lee, Ms. Betty Lee with the Hammond Rec.
Okay, just so that I can tell my VFW post here, so we can come and volunteer for it, that's why I'm asking, cause.
Yeah, Lacey, you wanna tell them who to contact?
I was gonna say, if you'll get in touch with the Recreation Department, um, the, I can give you the, the phone number, write it down, and I'll give it to you. And that way, uh, you can coordinate at any point, and they can make sure that you're on the email list for those notifications.
They usually have a great turnout, so that would be, that would be a good.
The post itself, we've been wanting to do something like that, so this is perfect.
Um, I just, I wanted to update, uh, on some of the street lights, just see how we were coming with that. I get a lot of calls in my district from street lights, from, uh, I just wanted to see how we're coming along with everything for the city ones.
So I don't have an update on the city ones, but on the energy ones, um, Energy has been telling us for months that they were doing their assessment, doing their assessment, and just kept taking time. So we dedicated city personnel last week to do our own assessment. We turned in all of those street lights. There's, I think, somewhere between a hundred and sixty or a hundred and eighty lights on that. And then Chris, um, Hammond's will be at our next meeting. She was out of town this week, but she'll be at our next council meeting to give a full update on that. We can also update any of those specific locations that you have.
Just Villa West has a lot, a lot of them random, there, there's a.
I know, I know some of the ones on that list are on that list of Energy, so we can kind of cross combine those and look at them.
And I think Timber Lane, uh, I think we've done everything for the city-wise. I think Energy was working on, on something, but I think they're pretty close to getting whatever they need done. So you haven't heard no, any more update on that one, okay?
I can ask Robert for an update.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, he's always usually really good with getting with me as well. I just, usually when I'm here, I just remind me to ask you again, and then, uh.
It's pretty much citywide, congratulations.
Absolutely.
There's a big, there's a bigger plan.
Yeah, there's a lot in Woodbridge and Whitmore. I mean, like, it's, it, we did a citywide assessment that, again, you know, it, it's a team effort in terms of trying to get the city back in business after Ida. And it's just been a long haul, and we're tired of waiting, so.
This might be a question for Chris, but I know whenever a public, a private person has a, a, an entry light, we pay monthly. Does the city pay monthly for lights that aren't working?
Yes, the other question I had to her was, when will we be getting our credit on the lights that have been out?
Yeah, okay.
Because some of these lights, quite frankly, were out prior to the storm.
Right.
Um, we have all of those locations documented. Dory actually, in the Streets Department, keeps really good records, but this assessment we just did, we marked them all. There, that, that all, all that information has gone to Energy.
And she's gonna be at the next meeting?
She is gonna be at the next meeting, she confirmed that.
I had some calls, which is not of our hands, but about pills, and, you know, about increase and all, and so, um, a lot of people were concerned about it, which, that's not in my, you know, hands, but I'd like some information that we could possibly get to let some people know it, maybe just a spike and it's gonna go down, or there's something we're gonna expect throughout the whole.
Right. The mayor really wanted her at this meeting, but she had already had plans to be out of town for stuff, so she'll be at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, the concrete behind the Splash Park and the old bathroom in Mooney Park, when can we, uh, get that tore down? Mr. Mayor or Ms. Lacey?
We probably just need to get quotes on it. We don't have quotes on it yet. I don't know where the money is budgeted to accomplish that. We probably have to look at the appropriations that were made for this year. I know that we're kind of at a, I think, a pause regarding the Splash Park or some of those other things, so maybe we'll, um, use some of those different funds.
Originally, we were talking about keeping it, so for sure, you wanna get rid of that concrete? We're talking about people sitting with benches on it, you wanna get rid of that for sure?
Between the Splash Park and the pool?
And the.
I mean, the Splash Park and the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you wanna get rid of that, and I'm glad you said that. That's what they've been asking about, bleachers. They have no bleachers in the park, so, um, on the south side of the basketball court, I think that'll be the best side to put the bleachers.
That's an easier, faster thing to get, probably.
Yeah. Another thing, too, uh, the lights, which Sam spoke of that earlier. We having problems with that, so that's going on. And the stop sign on Spruce Street and Phoenix. First, I wanna thank the community, because those are the ones recognized that they needed a sign there. And second, I wanna thank the administration and the mayor for actually getting a sign out there. Thank you. That's, that's it for me on council report. Any other reports? And, uh, on the sixteenth of April as well, we will have a, uh, Easter egg hunt in MLK Park, and I'll be giving more information on it as we get closer to that date. All right, and as our council reports, uh, can I get an approval of our February twenty-second, twenty twenty meeting?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye. Resolutions none, old business none, new business, resolution number one.
A resolution, one, application for a full hundred thousand dollars in the Love Louisiana Outdoors Program Funds for improvements to Martin Luther King and Zemari Parks. Two, local funds, match for design, engineering, and our administrative costs if incurred. Three, grants department staff to administer the city's Love Louisiana Outdoors Program. And four, the mayor to sign related documents. Charles Boucher.
Good evening. I wanna stress about this, this is not a new application. This is the same application that was previously approved by the council. What this is, is a housekeeping matter. The state has asked for some specific language in the resolution that wasn't in our original resolution, um, supporting the application. Specifically, they wanted to see that grants department staff would be administering the project or program, and that the mayor would be authorized to sign documents. The amount that we're applying for, four hundred thousand dollars, that's four hundred thousand dollars with no match. The only matching funds would be if in the end, we find that, you know, we wanna spend more than four hundred thousand, or if we were to engage a design or engineering company to do any type of formalized design or engineering. At this point, we're not anticipating doing that. We, we've got what we think is a very nice design, it was designed in-house and presented as part of our application.
So the local funds matched, so we don't need none of that, right?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Charles, could you state on some of the things for the public to know?
Absolutely.
And break it down, you know, what gonna cost what, and, and what are money going in? And how much money going in each part?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Originally, we were looking at spending a little bit more in Zemari than in Martin Luther King, and that was largely due to the, the sizes of the parks. During the application process, in fact, within the last, just the last couple of weeks, around the same time we were asked to do this resolution, um, the state decided that the shade structure that we were gonna do over the bleachers at Zemari Park Pool really didn't fit this, this grant. So they asked us if we could divert those funds somewhere else. That allowed us to go back to the original concept for Martin Luther King Park, which was a walking trail that went around the entire park. Uh, so now we've gone from a small walking trail that was kind of near the playground to a walking trail that follows the entire perimeter, connects to existing sidewalk. So we'll actually be spending a little bit more now in Martin Luther King than we were gonna be plan, planning to spend. But in Martin Luther King, we've got, uh, playground equipment, new playground equipment and, uh, playground surfacing improvements. Uh, we're proposing, um, a seesaw-like piece of equipment, um, and a merry-go-round piece of equipment, which is also wheelchair accessible, a little bit different than what was installed in, um, in K-Square Park, but similar in some respects. All new surfacing under the playground equipment, um, and under an expanded swing set area. These funds, you may recall, were about social distancing, so separating equipment, providing more space for children to, to play is, is how we're able to include those things. Uh, the walking trail is the biggest, one of the bigger components in that park. It would be about, um, half mile long, I believe, and, um, we're looking at putting some sidewalk through the center of the park where the, the baseball field is, so you could actually walk like a third of a mile, walk a full half mile, or, or a combination thereof. Uh, it would actually connect most of the large, uh, major facilities in the park. Park benches, picnic tables, uh, outdoor grills, which was something that we heard, um, the community wanted. Uh, so that would be in Martin Luther King Park. Uh, the total there is about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And in Zemari Park, we're looking at, uh, similar playground equipment improvements, the same type of seesaw and, um, merry-go-round like structure, uh, new safety surfacing, expanding the swings there as well. Uh, there, we're also replacing some equipment that was originally installed back in, I think, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, that we've had some issues maintaining, so that equipment will come out, which will make room for the new equipment. We're gonna be doing some picnic pavilions, um, around the pool. I think there's four in total, um, two along the main sidewalk, uh, in front of the structure, and then sort of two to the south between like the, the pool and the basketball court and the ring road. We've got, uh, dog park equipment, that's one of the other major improvements, expanding the dog park, which is something that visitors have been asking for, for a long time, probably adding about nine thousand square feet to the dog park. Uh, redoing that, that privacy wall, uh, along, what street is that? I wanna say Magnolia, but I don't think that's right. Um, that back, that back street that runs along the south side of Zemari. And then there'll also be concrete for sidewalk improvements throughout, um, the playground area and near the picnic pavilions. And the total for that is one hundred eighty-two thousand.
You right at four hundred thousand.
That was the goal.
Yes, okay. How much you planning on spending on that, uh, the dog park?
Dog park, we've got about seventeen thousand for the enclosure, about twelve thousand for the equipment. So that's about, uh, twenty-nine thousand. And then there's some miscellaneous concrete work, uh, there's, there's a shade structure in there as well. So we're probably looking at under forty thousand in total for the dog park.
Forty thousand, okay, on that fence, how much you talking about spending on the fence?
That's part of the enclosure, that's part of the seventeen thousand.
Okay, so it gonna be, okay, roughly forty thousand. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Okay. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Resolution number two?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Tangi Parish Government to overlay the following streets. North Wilson Street, Western Avenue, Natchez Street, Mooney Avenue, South Elm Street, Fern Street, East Mary Street, West Green Street, East Green Street, Encelia Street, Lacy Landrum.
This is, uh, one of those standard agreements, you've passed several of these in the past. Um, there is no cost to the city, this is covered under Tangi Parish Government. Um, they will be overlaying these streets that are listed here. That's attachment number one is the actual contract. Attachment number two shows you the street segments from start to end. Um, I know that there were some questions raised about how these streets were arrived at. Um, you will need to talk to the parish council members about that. Um, we have asked for more coordination of the priorities that you all have, that our Streets Department has, that the mayor has, the city engineer has, so that we can, uh, maybe arrive all on the same page and just have a better priority, uh, system.
Yeah, cause, I mean, I, I got a little problem with that, cause on, on Tina, Tammy, Brenda, Alida area, I mean, it's, puddles on every single, single road, pretty, pretty rough. And from repair work that had to be reworked, I guess, you know, by the city or whatnot, with drainages and everything else, so, you know, that's, some of the roads sinking and falling. And I mean, some of these roads that are on this list, you know, are, I mean, I'm glad they're getting done, but they're not nowhere near as rated poorly conditioned as some of these other ones that I just named.
I think we're in agreement.
That's a very big priority. So, yeah, I mean, um, yeah, I'd like to see something improved with this, uh, a good bit. I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna turn down any, you know, free streets to the city, not free, but I mean, any, you know, streets getting repaired, but, uh, definitely need to get a better handle of this process. I don't know, how do we, where do we start with that?
We've had conversations with the leadership there to.
Okay.
A better process.
I think when we first became councilmen, I had brought this here up, you know, uh, here you got city councilmen, and not even picking the streets, what's being done, and so here it is, what, going into the last year, and we still talking about the same thing, you know? We need to have a better understanding, uh, President Kip, he know what street bad in his area better than me. And I know this here for a fact, for every city councilman up here, we could pretty much tell you what streets are bad because we riding on the streets every day versus a parish councilman. So I think, you know, and not for us, for the next one that's come up here to sit up here. They need to be aware of what's going on, and have more of a say-so of what's going on with the streets and what streets need to be repaired. Because I did look at some of the streets in my area, and I asked a question about, you know, why this street being repaired? Why this street being repaired? Because I, uh, Second Avenue, you know, Silver Streets, uh, Washington Avenue, White Street, you know? And that was just one block, so I started driving, closing my eyes, cause I didn't wanna see no more streets, cause it ain't like I'm gonna get them done anyway.
Please don't drive with your eyes closed. I want you to come to the next meeting.
Well, I hope you mean that, thank you.
Like, like somebody, was Mooney Avenue, was that one done, what, less than four years ago?
I don't know.
Yeah, that was, it was done, and I asked about that, but what he doing is, is the top of Mooney Avenue.
I don't think it's the same, yeah.
So it's from Florida all the way up to the top. So what they did, yeah, they didn't do the whole street.
All right, sounds good.
I've had several, I've had several conversations with Buddy Original about some of this stuff, and, you know, a lot of these, a lot of these plans are way more than five years out.
Yes.
You know, they have, they have a system that is their system. I don't disagree with what we're saying, we each have streets in, in all of our districts that, that are, that are bad. And when you try to get something done, maybe you can work in a small section, maybe you can't. But their plan is so far out, uh, I don't know how you, I don't know how you intercept that.
This was also, uh, come to find out bid.
This was also, uh, come to find out bid, uh, before we got the contract. So, once, once it's kind of out there and, and the contractors, and it's, and it's out of it, I don't know if it's actually been received yet, but once it's out there, they've already measured, they've already done all that, so it's very difficult to just make a swap. But I think going forward, I think there can be some, some more collaboration on this. And we have to remember, they're representing their districts as well.
Oh, yeah.
And their, and their folks as well, and we appreciate that partnership, so. And I know that, that you all have articulated that.
Yeah, but I think, you know, the communication process, 'cause some of the roads, and if it takes a while to get on the table, some roads may, uh, get worse and deteriorate even faster than the ones that were at that time, so we may need to make a amendment to it, or revisit something else.
Or maybe something that we look at in our capital-
Those particular roads, when it comes to, uh, budget coming up.
Mm-hmm.
If they're that bad, we can take, take them on in this next year's budget.
Okay.
Yeah, we kind of have said a lot of times that let's let the parish cover that, because they do such a good job of overlaying streets, but that may be something that we make kind of a one-time investment, or, or really look at that need, citywide.
Speaking of that, we have some streets that just were destroyed practically from this hurricane, and I know that that is probably everywhere. And when it's parish level, they're, they're looking at a lot of other streets too. Um, you know, Michigan, which is, is it Michigan? Or Minnesota Park, which isn't my district, but, I mean, people have complained to me about that, and, you know, there's the potholes that we-
Minnesota Park's been on our list for a long-
Yeah, I mean, what do we do, what do we do about those that we're, we want them to asphalt?
We can always appropriate funds.
Okay.
So, so that may be something to think about as we go into this budget cycle. Uh, the other thing, and I know, uh, Councilman Divitario and I talked about this, think about your, your top five. You know, let's come up with a top five list from each district, um, and, and really think in terms of priority. Think about, you know, and then we can ride those and agree on them. Maybe we look at some photos, whatever the best way is to assess and come to it.
Is it possible to have like a cost sharing with the parish? 'Cause if they're already bidding them out, we can allocate, I don't know if we do things that way, but if they're already bidding out certain streets and ride, you know, get on the back of a contractor that's already doing these streets?
So an option to us is to piggyback on the contract, because most likely it is done through unit pricing, which is the same mechanism that we typically use for our work. And we could see what the price is coming at. If it ends up being a good contract and we, that looks favorable, and the city engineer kind of looks at it and says, "Yeah, that's a good price, let's jump on that."
And it may be, it may be an option too, that looking at the streets that they are overlaying, and then looking at the streets that we, that we need extra help with, and seeing if there's any intersection, so that the contractor really doesn't have to move his equipment. It's more of just a continue, it's more of just a continuation. Uh, I mean, that may be another, that may be another option, 'cause to have them just pick up and go to, and go to a totally different area, they may or may not be as interested in doing that.
So also, the table that's on the second attachment doesn't include two streets that are listed on the agreement, does that matter?
Which were the two streets?
Uh, they're Western and Wilson.
Wilson is only a very small segment.
Right.
It doesn't, I mean, like, it would just be one block anyway.
Yeah, it's just not on the list, so I didn't know if that mattered. And then Western is probably not that large either.
That's correct, it's just those few blocks. I think it's like three, maybe four blocks?
Is it Western, uh, across Morrison? Go, 'cause it kind of grows, a little extension goes by O'Reilly's behind there. Is that, is that part of it, or is it just on Morrison?
Yes, it's on the list, I can't really tell.
I had to find out the exact segment for you.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't wanna speak without knowing that one, for sure. Wilson is an obvious one, 'cause it's only one block.
Yeah.
North Wilson, North Wilson.
Are you interested in doing the one by O'Reilly's? 'Cause it's not much of a street, but the foundation's there, so-
Yeah, but that's-
Another one we need to talk about.
That's what I figured, extending it to there.
It's been talked about for a couple of years.
Yeah, that, that'd be something, I think, yeah.
Think about it for the budget.
Okay.
We'll get Chuck to price it.
Yeah, if you, if you really can think about a top five list for each of you, then we could start looking at what that cost would be. We can find out what the parish has gotten in for their contract. Chuck can put some, you know, numbers, pencil to the paper there.
So the top five streets?
In your, in your district, yeah.
You need to let it be known too, now, we're talking about asphalt, not concrete.
That's correct.
So let it be known.
Good point, very good point. We do already have several concrete streets that go into the budget, but we have typically reserved or removed asphalt streets to be handled by the parish.
Any other question from anyone from the council? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve?
Second. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divitario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number three?
A resolution for the Hammond City Council to accept the recommendations from Seth W. Stoughton's report and request the mayor to develop a request for proposal, RFP, to solicit information from private entities that will conduct a comprehensive review of the Hammond Police Department and its operations. Councilman Wells?
Thank you. It's been a long run to where we are today. From the very beginning, the administration and the mayor put a wool over our eyes with the chief being appointed. We had a special meeting. Even though some only wanted a town hall, we agreed on the investigation. Even though some did not want one. And now we are here with the report. It is only right that we, uh, me, the councilman, ask the mayor to the following recommendation. One is what I have on here tonight. Straight from the report, develop an RFP or any outside agents to review the Hammond P.D. operations. Comment? Mr. Mayor?
It's up to you to pass.
Okay, uh, any comments by the city councilman?
Since this is, you know, a time for discussion, uh, we asked for a report to be done. The report was done. The administration was given a copy of the report. I don't see where we need to go any further.
Okay, well, me and my community, we asking for it from day one. And it's amazing. And I think I asked for it to be, uh, on the projector. But this what I see. This what I know. The booking room incident, and thank God they wasn't trained well, 'cause if they were trained well, the guy'd be dead at this day. We got a chief, got a promotion. We got the guy that had him in a headlock and was choking him. He got a promotion. And we don't see nothing wrong, and this what's taking place. You know, I'm not gonna argue about it, uh, nothing else, but this what's going on. So if we don't say nothing, we don't do nothing about this. So everybody in that booking room video that we all have seen several times, so we telling everybody that if you beat somebody with handcuffs, if you choke somebody, you get promoted. Is this what we saying to Hammond? This, are, are this what we doing? Saying everybody that do something wrong, you get promoted? Because this what I've been seeing. The chief got promoted. Uh, I think Dunn, am I, am I right? He end up getting promoted? Are this what we wanna, this what we wanna tell our people? And so it, it, the mayor just said it. It's up to the city councilman. You know, and I look at, I see the kids, the young kids, that's growing up, that's coming along. It's not about me. It's about, this don't take place. This don't happen no more in Hammond. And if we keep sending, pushing it to the back, pushing it to the back, you know, it can all come to an end. What I asked the mayor to do, the master says up to the city councilman. We can all bring it to an end, but you know what? It's not gonna come to an end if we keep sliding it up under the rug. And I don't know about you, I don't know about none of the city councilmen, to be honest with you, but I have nieces and nephews that's starting to drive. Gonna be driving. And we still don't know if they booking people the right way. We still don't know if the handcuffs on the person wants they go in the booking room. So all these here, uh, Mr. Mayor, did you read the report? From the book, please.
Read the report.
Read the report, listened to the man give his report. And as you saw in the video, you know, he's taking the word of the suspect that he was getting beat down, that his hands did not come out of the handcuffs, which the officer said the hands did come out of handcuffs. He, as you said, if they were trained properly, he would've died. I disagree with that. They were trained properly, and he obviously did not. Um, there's distorted view on that video, which everybody has seen, so there's a distorted, uh, realization that you see that others don't. So if you want something like this to be investigated again, then vote on it, and then we'll get an outside source. Do I agree with it? No, but you do, so everybody, that's democratic way. We have a difference of opinion, and you vote on it. And whatever you vote on, we follow through with.
Let me ask this question, uh, while we at this point. There were some of the recommendation that was made inside of the report. Uh, I think if we can get some of this information, where we could see it, the, a current copy of the booking room policies and procedures, a current copy of the training on proper handcuffing, the current copy of the use of force policy and procedure for the police department, uh, current copy of the policy on, uh, securing prisoners in the jail and the booking room rails, uh, including the dates and times of the training, I think that that would help, at least for me. I can't speak for anyone else. And that would at least get me started on some things that was actually recommended in this report.
I think there are a lot of recommendations here that fortunately, we've already either made progress on or completed. Um, and so it's a, it's a, it's a place for dialogue, it's a place for improvement. We know that we can always do things better in the city of Hammond, and that's what we're all dedicated to as, as people here, as elected officials. I know that's what you're dedicated to. And absolutely, let's talk about those policies. Let's talk about the practices that are already there. Let's talk about the training. Why don't you come out to re-trainer? Come out to the right training, come out and see what actually happens. Be a part of it.
Uh, any other councilmen have anything to say?
I'll, I'll put on the record what I already had sent to everyone, which was that I think, uh, kind of, as Councilman, uh, Andrews is saying and Ms. Landrum, is that I think there are some things that are recommendations, and, and he cites specifically what he's using to support his recommendations. There's some things in there that are obviously, some things might be old, some things have been updated. Some people, some, this comes from testimony of, uh, employees who are no longer employees. Some comes from statements written, um, four years ago. So there's some things that probably haven't been fleshed out, and I thought it would be appropriate, as I told all of you, that, um, to have something in writing, 'cause that's what, we're trying to get documentation of everything. And something in writing that flushes out some of his recommendations, which he puts in, uh, items three through seventeen, so that then we could narrow down our focus, because what I understand the goal to be is to make the Hammond Police Department better. Make sure at this current time, they're doing the things that they need to be doing, and, um, address anything that we're lacking now. And that would be an appropriate RFP of what is not, uh, being done, and get some outside source on that. But that, that's what I sent last week, and I still stand by that. As, as the resolution is, um, written, I had a problem with it last week, and I still do, 'cause I, I think we can do better.
Well, I'm sorry.
Again, I guess it would be a best, a best, a, a starting place. With the, that information, the, that I just requested, uh, to give us a starting place, to start. Uh, and then we can move from there to see exactly where we need to focus on, or how they need to focus on what they need to do inside of the department. Being able to see this information. As Councilwoman, 'cause as I did say, you know, it's on paper. That way we'll be able to see is, uh, I guess I could say, if, if the standard or whatever, if it's being met, uh, if it's, if it's lacking, if from what we see on their, on their training log.
Another example would be promotions and, and not enough women in, or minorities in higher-ranking, um, offices. We have a civil service system, which was not even referenced in the report, which doesn't allow promotion for anything other than longevity in the department, as I understand it. I mean, I'm not, uh, I don't know. And that was everything about civil service, but that's an appropriate response to that recommendation is, yes, we see you should have more women and minorities leadership positions. However, you follow a civil service structure of, um, promotion, which will not allow you to favor anything other than the tenure of a person's employment.
And that was one of the things I left off of my list too, the current organizational flowchart, um, from twenty-twenty to twenty, into twenty-twenty-one.
Well, it's amazing, and I'm gonna say this here, for the record. If we see somebody in the dollar store, and they get, they get caught on camera stealing, something take place. They want everybody to find out where this person located, where this person located. And we don't have to go by what nobody say. We saw this on camera where the chief, the current chief, beat a man with handcuffs on. We saw this on camera. Where, I think he's a lieutenant now? Where the officer was choking a man on camera. You ain't got to take nobody word, you ain't got to try to guess, you ain't got to try to figure out. We saw these people on the camera where they had done wrong. And I'm just going by what the reports say. So it don't take a rocket scientist to figure this out. And we gonna keep going back and forth, back and forth, and Ms. Gonzalez?
Mm-hmm.
Before this here came to us, did you see the, did you see the video?
I saw the same thing you guys did. It was put on Facebook, the however long this clip was.
Yeah.
It was mentioned once in the public hearing. It was mentioned six times the night of the confirmation. Um, and it was also mentioned, um, by Councilman Wells during that confirmation. It was, uh, linked into the advocate story on the day before confirmation. It was also embedded in the advocate story the day afterwards. So if something had been slipped by, that's a very unique way to do that.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna say this here, for my community. My community not safe right now with the current chief we have right now. My community not safe with these promotions going on, and these the same guys that beat somebody with handcuffs on. And I think, uh, District Three, I think it's still a part of Hammond. So my community is lacking. My community keep asking me about this. And I really don't know what else to do. But I'm gonna say this here. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? You are turning Hammond, Louisiana to a rotten fruit, and you don't wanna fix it. And the people I represent are praying that you fix it, and the scales fall from your eyes. And it's amazing, uh- And it's amazing, uh, I'm about to bring it up. Andre. The email I got from you. The dialogue is too important to become a sideshow. I hope this helped in your review in this important matter. A sideshow? Yeah. A sideshow. You represent the city. You should have been telling the mayor about this here person when it first happened. So the shot, do you know where the sideshow come from? The sideshow, Mr. Mayor, you don't need to leave now because you know I put it back on the agenda. The sideshow come when the mayor lied to us about the chief. That's where the sideshow come in it. The chief, I asked the chief myself, show the video at the council meeting. It's under investigation. Yeah, it was under investigation, but he wasn't under investigation. So I don't think it's a sideshow when it come to people look like me being beat with handcuffs on. I don't think it's a sideshow, Mr. Mayor, when all of us see and know what's going on. And yet we started trying to put it up under the rug. The city councilman, I can't go back and forth with y'all every time this here come up. You all know what's going on. Just once, just do what's right. Just once, that's all I ask for. It's not about me. I'm worried about the kids. And this is what I tell everybody. It's about the kids. It's about the elders. It's about the community. I know y'all don't have this problem in y'all community. Y'all won't have this problem if y'all kid get arrested. I know this. But we have this problem when our kids get arrested, when people look like me. I'm just gonna say it. You know, when black and brown people get in trouble or whatever, that's when all these little sideshows, since that's what it's called now, sideshows take place.
And Mr. Councilman, I'm happy to address that comment. I made that comment to the mayor and the director of administration, the council members when this came up, to identify for you the balance of the administrative responsibilities and the council responsibilities. And as I identified, I think it's appropriate for the council to determine what are the current policies, what are the current practices, how those were developed, what the training is for officers, so you can make your evaluation on what's going on in the department. I think that's appropriate. Whether you need an RFP beyond that, you can determine after you've looked at that. I think the sideshow I was referring to, Councilman, is talk away from the operations of the department. And I think what we're looking for is a safe, functioning, well-trained, well-operated Hammond Police Department. And that should be the focus on what we're doing, how we're gonna get better. Are we getting better? And if not, let's figure ways to get there. And anything beyond that, I think, is what becomes a sideshow. And that was the purpose of my comment to you all and to the mayor to encourage dialogue between the council and, to encourage dialogue between the council and dialogue to, with the administration on this very important matter.
I know there's two things that I bring up. And it get real quiet. When I talk about the sewer in District Three and when I talk about the booking room incident. Anything else I talk about, we'll be talking all day long. But when those two things come up, it's amazing how everybody be so quiet. And I think those are the things you need to talk about. I heard you say safety. Yeah, uh, the sewer not safe in District Three. Uh, the kids not safe in District Three. I talked about the cameras. Look like everything I talk about, it be pertaining to safety. But I don't see what is happening there, so.
We've made major strides with sewer in District Three along with the pond that's just about being finished. And we're doing a lot of good infrastructure there. We bypassed District Three with some forest mains straight to a head wall right just before the pond. So we're constantly working on a sewer in District Three and around the city. And I think we're doing, we're making progress. Mac McCraney, Michael Showers with NAACP was in a meeting with myself and also the president of NAACP out of Baton Rouge. Looked at the camera video. Mr. Mac said, Pete, what if they had a camera on the other side of the room? Which since he said that, we put another camera in that booking room. What if another shot was shown where your police chief, who wasn't the chief at the time, was seen hitting the gentleman in the head? Said he'd be fired immediately. He said he didn't hit him in the head. The camera doesn't show him in hitting him in the head. He was trained to hit in the shoulders and the chest area, in the back. Says that's what he did. Also said that, and there are times apparently, and it's not, you know, the procedure, but when someone does not seem to be, um, a threat, they don't put the handcuffs on as tight as they maybe could or should. And in this case, one of the handcuffs wasn't on. They said a handcuff came off. That's how it started. So that being said, these things were said. Mr. Mac, Michael Showers and their team sat there, we talked about and discussed it. They know that that police chief, as Michael Showers said, every time we have an event and we ask police forces to come, this chief is one of the first ones there and the first ones to be involved. He's one of the ones that continuously, as I've asked since he's been in office and before that, to do more and more training with officers. So we're doing the right things, we're in the right direction. Do things happen? Yes. And you act accordingly. And that's what I think we've done here. I know you don't agree and I respect that, but that's as far as I can say. You know, we disagree on this matter.
Okay, so back to, I think everybody up here wants the best.
Yes, sir.
Want the best police department that we could have functioning. I've been around the Hammond Police Department all my life. Been in my family for years. Okay? So I think where we, where we won't lose ground, and I understand where Councilman Wells is coming from. I receive these phone calls myself, a different thing for my district as well. But to make sure that we're going down the right road, if we could get the following information that I requested. Now again, I can only speak for me. No, we, we accept this report for what this report is. But get copies of this information, because this is the most, that sticks out the most of what happened basically inside of this booking room. To see if it's matching up to what it's supposed to be. And if not, then that's where we start putting this stuff together. I, I think that would be, to me, would be a great place to start. Again, I can only speak for myself. Because we do have some serious issues and things that we're facing. President Kip. For as law enforcement, dirt bike, four wheelers, everybody in my community know. Are you getting everything you need from law enforcement in your district?
I'm not gonna say a hundred percent yes, no, I don't.
Yeah, so.
I don't.
That's, that's what I'm looking at. Uh, the dirt bikes and the four wheelers, it's, it's just like a car now with, uh, with the inspection sticker, the license plate, the insurance, the helmet, I mean, it's just like a car. And I'm saying this here, we have a real issue. I can't tell you about no other district, but I know we don't have law enforcement in our district. The shooting is taking place every night now. So now, you know, and I'm saying this here, so we can sit here and keep tiptoeing, keep tiptoeing. But it's something that's not gonna go away until we handle the situation. And I'm glad you brought up Michael Showers. I met with him. And what he told you, it's a different story, but you know what? The next council meeting, see, it gonna keep going on because, uh, and Michael Showers, he the, the president of the NAACP, Tansport Parish, the next council meeting, I'm gonna invite him up here. So the same story you just said, I want to hear him say it because, and that's what I don't like. And I tell everybody, you know, if we gonna have a meeting, I want all of us in there. But he said, she said, so these stories ain't matching up. But I'm not gonna talk or say nothing. But the next meeting, I want to hear these same stories.
Well, the gunshots aren't only in your district. It North Carter Street, Richardson, Rosewood, gunshots coming out of there, uh, drugs. I mean, it's a common area that should have pretty regular patrolling in there or set up shop in that little area. Um, I mean, it's, it's right there in the middle of town. Um, you know, I mean, it's, it picked back up again a little bit. And, uh, you know, I, I think we really need to address that issue somehow. And, you know, we, we got patrolling parked at the church on Pecan a lot of times, but maybe they need to park on the church on Clark Street more, um, to deter some, um, activities. I mean, most of the community in that little area knows where it's coming from. So, I mean, it doesn't take, it doesn't take too much to figure it out.
Well, that'd be the big help.
Yeah.
And people do know where it's coming from and they know who's doing it. They help us out and we can solve some problems.
Yeah.
I think a lot of problems from talking to some of these judges is the judiciary system. You know, people are getting caught, they're getting put in juvenile detention and they're getting released just as quick as they're put in, or even adults. So it's a, it's an evolution that needs to be addressed and it's a problem in the, in the country as well as in the city. And it's, uh, until we do something about it, we need to continue to work with the community. Community needs to continue to help us, help them.
Andre, I have a question for you. There, could I make an amendment to this resolution?
Certainly, yes.
This is my proposal to this resolution. Okay. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening.
For everyone else.
Good evening.
Um, does anyone have the report that Mr. Seth?
I do.
Tracy Wells, Six Ten Moni Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana. Um, I was just taking some notes while I was sitting back there listening to the dialogue that you guys had. And I heard President Kip and Councilwoman Gonzalez mention policies and procedures that's needed, um, for you all to move forward. I heard Councilwoman Gonzalez specifically say recommendation three through fifteen. Reading the agenda.
Sorry, I, I said seventeen or maybe if I misspoke, I meant seventeen.
Three through seventeen.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, what's on the agenda is asking for RFP specifically for recommendation number one. And Mr. Stoughton, I watched the George Floyd case, by the way, is an expert in his field, subject matter expert, one of the best in the country. And recommendation number one states, the city of Hammond should conduct a comprehensive review of the Hammond Police Department and its operation. These do not fall under policies and procedure as stated. Agency culture, including employee morale, retaliation, real or perceived against HPD employees and former employees, favoritism perceived or real in HPD operations, function and value of special units, including street crimes, the adequacy, the, the propriety of how confidential information are used, managed and rewarded. Also, in this report, since it is public record and I did read it, it states that there's an overreach by the mayor into this department. There's no delianation between the department and his office. So if you decide to move forward and get an outside agency to review operations, it will not just be for policies and procedures. I do understand that you want to review policies and procedures. But where, where would that bring you moving forward? So your choice tonight, even if you decide not to accept all the recommendations as a whole, what's on the table and the mayor stated himself, is up to you all whether or not you decide to get an outside agency to review. We have a problem with our operations department in the Hammond Police Department. I mean, I'm a law-abiding citizen, but in our community, there is harassment. There is retaliation. People are scared to call the police. So when we have an issue as a whole, and it may not be affecting your district, but it's affecting ours. So this has been a long road. And I heard Dr. Landrum say, she quoted the number of times that the video was cited. Was the video told to you when you all made the decision to appoint this, confirm the appointment of the chief? Did any of you know the full time of the video? It was just a snippet? And I see you shaking your head. Did you see the full video?
Just the snippet, same as everybody saw.
You all saw snippets? The mayor knew what was there. The administration knew what was there. So from the onset, from the onset of this whole thing, it was done without clarity. Mr. Andrews was the only one who did not vote in favor. And you all did, and this is what we have now. So at this juncture, you all have to decide moving forward. Do you want to bring someone in to look at the overall operations of this department? Not just the policies and, policies and procedures that you're requesting. Because once you request the policies and procedures, which is number three, moving forward to the end, you're still missing one through three. Which this expert said, you need an outside entity. That's his recommendation. And I heard when he made the presentation that it was egregious and unreasonable. Those are not light words, egregious and unreasonable. So, I mean, yes, it is your decision. If I was in your shoes, it would be a difficult decision. Because we all need great public policing. But at the end of the day, we also need a police department that is above and beyond reproach, that is protecting and serving us all.
The snippet, as you call it, is the part of the film where the suspect lunged for the drugs and then they episode with the police chief and done went on.
The, the video is around twelve minutes or so long. Um, I almost commented again on this and that's all I'm gonna say is that the video's clear. It wasn't, it wasn't a very, uh, I didn't see the whole twelve minute video, um, until afterwards. And, uh, you know, it, it doesn't get any more clear than that and it's just not really taken well. If you really watch it, you know, you have a professional who, who does this for a living, who watches it and made a long report on it. Um, everybody's gonna have their own opinion on it. And, uh, you know, uh, I think that the police department does have some issues. Um, you know, it comes right to me all the time from the police department, from within the police department. So, um, I stay out of trouble, but it comes to me. Um, I, you know, I think if we get all this information or request it, what's, I mean, if there is problems, I mean, who's gonna, who's gonna address them? I mean, I'm, I mean, I, that's not gonna fall under them beneath my, my duties. Um, so I don't know, how do you look into it without having another party look into it? Uh, I'm not looking, you know, I'm not a professional looking in that, but I, I do hear the problems that come to me about everything that, that Tracy stated up there. Uh, and, uh, I, I think there is an issue and, and there's a lot of good officers and there's a, you know, and, but there's also some, some issues that, that keep coming up. And, uh, and it's just, you know, we can keep on talking about it, but we need to get in, we need to get this addressed and we need to get it fixed. And we need to work towards getting it fixed the right way. And, uh, I think everybody, you know, wants to get the issue resolved. And, uh, you know, we, we need to do what's right.
Good evening. Um, my name is Nana Minima. I live at fifty-two Whitmore Drive. Um, I haven't been.
I haven't been here in a while, I've been saying, so I just, uh, I didn't even know this was on the agenda, but I have some questions, if that's okay to ask. Looking at what Councilman Wells is proposing for this resolution, it says, it's in two parts, correct, Councilman? You have the first part where it says to accept the recommendations, and then the part for the RFP, correct? Two things, actions that you're wanting them to do is accept, and then now do a RFP. Is that like in a nutshell?
Yeah, whatever you're reading, yeah.
Okay. So, with that, I just, you know, looked up the word with accept is just to receive. So, I was wondering if I hear a different, you know, I hear a unifying thing that we want to improve and make Hammond safer and make the police department safer. All of us, it seems like most of us here are agreeing with that. But if there's issues with a part of the RFP or anything like that, I was just curious. Councilman Leon, you're my district councilman, that would you be all right with separating? That you're accepting, saying you're receiving this report, the recommendations. Accepting doesn't mean you're taking, you know, that you're doing the part of the RFP if that was your issue with doing the part with the resolution, or the recommendation, excuse me, Number One? So, I just wanted to ask you that.
We had a report done, a professional report done. It was given to the administration. The administration's responsible for that department, not the council. Those recommendations, those suggestions, whatever you want to call them, I think they're, they're in the hands of the mayor, they're in the hands of the administration. What he chooses to do with that to improve the police department, and again, I'll reiterate, many of those things have already been done, and many are being worked on. But that is his responsibility, not the council's responsibility. So, that's kind of where I stand. I think he's a, I think the mayor's done doing a fine job, and he needs to continue to do that. If he's not doing a fine job, the people will vote him out this election year.
Okay. I, I hear and understand that, but as I was saying, just the part where he was saying, where I guess maybe if I get clarification, that, you know, you want us to stay in our lanes with the roles and have council do what they're supposed to do, and the mayor to do his job, what he's been elected to do and supposed to do, right?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pudrain, but all we can do is make a recommendation. What the mayor chooses to do is with that department is his prerogative, correct? Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm just...
I'm just trying to clean it up.
Yeah, I'm trying to get understanding too. But with Councilman Wells, you know, what he's proposing for this, like I'm saying, is there a way that you can accept because you had someone come here and do a, and present the information from their research, what they were doing? They were tasked to do that, which the council, you all tasked and agreed for this person to come and do this, correct? This person had put together a report, right? That Mrs. Wells referenced. You all, as the council, agreed to that person. Is that correct?
I don't think it was unanimous, but yes, we did agree to get a report.
So, I'm just saying the part where for me is like, he got the report, and we're just accepting the recommendations, and accepting just means you're receiving it.
Well, also, it could, it could also mean taking the information as valid and a fact.
Okay, so that's where the possible...
It could be an argument, sure.
Okay.
If we're getting into semantics.
Very, so...
And that's where my two minutes... Part of where my, part of my issue is, is that there's things in here that I know that happen or we can't do, such as promotion based on gender. How do we accept that we should do that when we legally cannot because of our civil service, you know? So, that, actually, I do have a problem with the, we should accept the recommendations because I can't accept the recommendation that we should have promote women because of being women or however it's said, I don't have it in front of me. I know it doesn't say it like that. But that same idea, we legally cannot say, yes, we should do that because we legally cannot promote women based, or anyone, based on anything other than tenure.
Okay. I understand that. So, I see like, you know, semantics about that.
Sure.
Because I'm looking at just accepting as receiving. Okay, thank you for that, Councilman Gonzalez. Because my thing was like, just because you accept it, then what? Like, what actions are you taking? And like, Councilman Andrews, and you said if we could do certain aspects of the recommendations, like review of policies and procedures, which, you know, you should want to review them. I feel like, you know, for my organization or anything, you should have a certain time you go back to see, hey, we need to spruce this, spruce this up, update it because some things that were commonplace, you need to make sure that you're staying on task, that this is actually getting done, because sometimes there's policies and then there's practice, right? And having a review and somebody coming outside to make sure that it's not a part of the organization, seeing that if you're actually doing your policies and it's implemented in practice, can help things only improve in my aspect. So, I was just, you know, these are just some of my thoughts. So, I was thinking, well, maybe we don't want to accept like all of this because semantics, we're gonna have to do all of them, but if, can we come back or do something where, as, you know, two of y'all have shared, that there are some good aspects of the recommendation, and some of you all might like all of it, but can we do something to help improve Hammond PD? What can we do? And I think there's always areas for improvement for myself, you know, anyone, that can we make it better so we can have a safer community here, right, for all of us? So, I also wanted to thank Mrs. Wells. I told her that, you know, thank you for, you know, bringing me up to speed and remembering what that first recommendation was. So, thank you for that. But I think this is something that we definitely, if you aren't gonna do this with accepting this resolution, I strongly encourage you as, me being a citizen and not on the council too, I agree, we need to have some type of review of law enforcement and other, you know, entities that need to have a review of their policies, how we can, how we can make sure that we're doing what's best for our citizens and, or that you all are doing stuff. So, you know, kudos to you that you already started doing those steps and taking that. And I'm sure that we're just gonna keep on getting better. But having that, you know, critical self-analysis too sometimes is also needed for us to improve and get better. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sorry, let me clarify a statement I made. It wasn't a recommendation about gender playing a role in doing it. It was just alleged that there was, might be gender inequality. So, I misspoke when I said that was a recommendation, but it is in the report, so go ahead.
And to, and respect to policy and procedures and review. We've done it in the past, and they're planning on doing it again. The chief, the assistant chief, the two captains, and the lieutenants, they are involved in reviewing the policies, and also employees as well. When things need to be changed or updated, that's an easy thing. When things need to be adjusted because of things that have happened in the past, such as this, that needs to be implemented as well. So, that's a good point you made, and that's something that is gonna be done as well.
That reminds me of a question I had. Is there a regular basis or something in the procedures that you're supposed to go back and, you know, review? For example, some people have bylaws, like we'll review bylaws every two years or policies?
That's a great number, because that's the number we're using now.
Okay, it's two? Okay, all right.
Now it is.
President Andrews, did, did you get an update for the submittal of, of the report to any of the agencies' last meeting that we voted for? Have you received any?
Not as of yet.
Any report?
Not as of yet.
Denise Palmer, 43502 Robinson Road, Hammond. I just remember when each and every one of you all got elected. You represent Hammond as a whole. And I can say this. My daughter was studying for her final. My neighbors are very rowdy. She called Hammond PD because she couldn't study for her final. They went right to my neighbors and said, "Dada, I called on you." That brings fear. That's not right. Because it puts, it put my family in harm's way. I have five, and I'm emotional right now because it seem like y'all got blinders on. I have five grandsons, and I have two sons. None of y'all would want anything harmful to happen to any of your children. But it seem like it's not gonna make a difference until it hits your house. And I pray it doesn't hit your house. But y'all gotta do what's right as a whole. Every, every one of y'all are representing a district. The mayor, all y'all, y'all come together as a whole. And if y'all keep pushing stuff and acting like it don't exist, Steve, you will put on the spot. You said it's all on the mayor, it's on you too. It's on you, it's on you, 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 and you. So, when I call Hammond PD, and they come right in the neighborhood and tell who called, they leaving. And I gotta live next door to the person. So, they can come over there, hurt my grandsons, hurt me. I'm a law-abiding citizen. We have to do better. Sometimes doing the right thing hurts, but you gotta do the right thing. You gotta do the right thing. And this gonna keep coming up, and y'all gonna keep pushing it to the side. So, when you be put on the spot, and when you put on the spot, and when the election comes up again, our communities, each one of your communities, districts gonna remember. I have five grandsons, and I'm gonna say it again. And I have two adult sons. I wouldn't want none of them to experience what that man experienced in there, and everybody act like they didn't see it. And I hate to get emotional because I want my point to be heard. It's not right, y'all. Don't let it be your house, and then you gonna fuss. Then you gonna raise ruckers. We gotta do better as a whole. You representing Hammond. You might have your own individual districts, and some of this never touched any of y'all districts. But what if it did? What if it was your, your husband? What if it was your son? You were wrong different.
You say your name, Mr. Robinson?
No.
I'm sorry.
I said Denise.
Okay. And I, I, I agree with you 100% on what you said about making the phone calls. Because I've made the phone calls, and I present, turn around and get the call back from the person that the complaint was made on, that the councilman called. And I tell him, I did call. Because I got, I, I have the complaint, and it's my duty to relay it. I did make the call. You know where I'm at. So, I, I, I do agree with you on that. I know that it's happened because it has happened to me not more than one time, several times. So, I, I, I can understand it, and it makes it hard for the community to want to get involved when you gonna be singled out. I got that.
There's no trust.
And that, that's unacceptable, and it's happened too. And there's no accountability to when that happens. There's no way that should happen if somebody calls. But they do the same thing to me though, what Kip said. You know, you, you park on the road, it's illegal to park on the road, clearly on the road. People calling me complaining about it. May, I notify the administration and the police department, and then the officers told them the councilman wanted to get you towed. I mean, that, that's unacceptable, but we get singled out because that's, you know, what we want, what's right for people. They're calling me, sending me pictures, telling me that. That, that's unacceptable, but, but that's the kind of acts that happen. And then that's a shame on a resident calling about that and then them telling them that. That should not be acceptable, that should be in the policy. And that's even code enforcement too. I've had the same thing with code enforcement. Somebody calls about something, code enforcement officer go up there and says, "Well, there's a guy over there." That, that's what comes to me and tells me, that, that, that should not be allowed either. And I don't know if that's in our, I don't know if that's in policy, or we in the ordinance to, to enforce that, but you, you should, that, that's not right. Andre, is there anything about that, or they can, they can, they, they have the free, freedom to just say, okay, we had that lady called and reported?
Well, the officer has his discretion, but I agree that it's really not appropriate to call out the complaint on, in most circumstances. I agree with that.
Unacceptable.
I agree with the lady who made that comment there. That was, that to me was not appropriate.
No, not at all. And there's need to be accountability to when that is said. I shouldn't have to hear that again. Because if somebody would've got killed or hurt or whatnot over that, that's, that's just terrible.
And what I tell my constituents is, call me. I call, I call the police radio room, and I tell them to go where they need to go. And they say, "It's the mayor." It's the mayor. I don't want what you went through to happen. And so, I'll make the call if I have to.
Now that that's been said, and I won't gonna leave it alone, but Tracy, can you come back up here and tell what the police department did me when we went up to the station? Hi, Tracy? And tell the difference between the police department and the fire department?
Well, I won't go into detail because that's, I'm not gonna go into detail. But there is a difference in professionalism between the different departments in the city. You have some who are well-trained in customer service, and you have some who are not. And so, that's more of a systemic issue that needs to be addressed. But right now, I'm just gonna leave it at what's on the agenda, is that you all have to make a decision.
Councilman, just to refer back to the, to the memo that I gave, that I issued to the council and to the mayor, that I did go through the responsibilities with the council and the mayor and different matters as to this. And my recommendation was that the, it was within the council's purview to request the mayor to undertake a review of the HPD operations in light of the recommendation of the report, and to report then to the council on the mayor's review of the HPD operation. So, that was, I just want to refer back, that was in my memo that I'd sent to the council and, and to the mayor.
So, say that again, please.
Yes, sir. So, what my, my email said was, the council cannot make the mayor or direct the mayor to issue an RFP. And the council really can't direct any city employees to, to participate in the RFP. That's an administrative function. But I, but what you can do as a part of your legitimate councilmatic function, public safety, good order, welfare of the city, you can, you can request the mayor because one of the mayor's responsibilities is to issue a report, if requested by the council under one of its functions. I believe you can request the mayor for the mayor to do a review of the HPD operations in light of the recommendation and those things that were discussed here. It's specifically Recommendation Number One. For him to do that review, he reports to the council then of his review. And then going forward, you take whatever, if you believe further action is necessary, whatever is needed, but the first review really ought to be to you by the mayor of the HPD operations in light of this recommendation. That was my suggestion as a first next step.
Okay. So, this the same mayor that you talking about? They didn't show us the entire video? This the mayor you talking about? Is this the same mayor you talking about?
That's the same mayor, Captain.
Okay. Yeah, uh, yeah, Mayor Pete. So, this the same mayor you talking about? So, you think, 'cause of, 'cause of Mayor Pete right now, that's why we here? If Mayor Pete would've showed us the entire video, I would've did like Councilman Andrew. I wouldn't have voted. I'm quite sure none of us wouldn't have voted if the mayor that you talking about right now would've showed us that video when we were first elected into office, and here it is now going into our fourth year, and we still talking about this video that took place? This, man...
Councilman, I think we're losing focus.
Yes, we are.
We don't want this to be a side...
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's right.
So, the focus is the HPD operations and what's going on now, what could be done to improve it based on these issues that were raised in this recommendation. And I think it's for the mayor, I believe, to report to the council. If you choose, for him to review these, make a report to the council, and then you evaluate what, what it is, what, what is the HPD operations on these matters? And then you decide going forward where you go.
That's why in my email I sent to everyone was for a written response. So, to go on top of that, a written response with citations to the necessary information that we need so that we will know it's there, it exists, or it doesn't exist.
I think that's a way we can move forward.
Well, what I got on the agenda, that's what I like to vote on.
All right. That's your motion, councilman, on the, the agenda item?
Yes. Uh, what you say, Ms. Gonzalez?
Councilman Andrews had asked about amending it, so he could certainly amend it if he was still inclined to do so.
Yeah.
I would like to make an amendment to that, that a written report be produced to the council as well.
By the ma-
By the mayor, yes.
Is that a substitute motion, or what is on the agenda?
So that's, it's not add-on, uh?
It's a, an addition to it.
It's an addition, the R F P plus.
Makes no sense. You can't, I mean, doing both makes no sense. It, it needs to be a subs-, it needs to be a substitute motion, or, 'cause how you, you, you asking us to vote on, you asking us to vote on, what, four different things here, which all are in conflict?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna comment on, on what, what you, I mean, the, the motion was made by Councilman Wells. There's no second yet, but Councilman Andrews has now proposed a substitute motion to add to that resolution that the mayor give a report to the council. And that would, is that in addition to the R F P, councilman, or in lieu of the R F P?
I just wanted to add it to what was there.
So there's a.
That's additional.
Would that be an, that would be amendment, not a substitution, is that correct?
You can, I mean, it could be either way. If you want a substitute, um, motion to add a report by the mayor, we still don't have a second to the Councilman Wells's first.
Second.
Right, so that's a second to Councilman Wells's. So now we have a, a motion to amend it, to add a report by the mayor to the council.
Second.
So, so the vote is gonna be to add to the existing resolution on the agenda, a report by the mayor to the council.
I'll just say that doesn't fix my issue with it, but that's me personally.
It really doesn't do anything.
And who develops the R F P? Says request the mayor to develop.
It's just a request. The mayor, I mean, in, in my opinion, the mayor's not obligated to generate the R F P, right?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
The resolution is now amended to include an additional item, and that is to add a report by the mayor to the council.
So do we have to vote on the second one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is as, this is as amended, so this is the resolution as amended. Well, we have the motion by Councilman Wells, Divitorio, that was now amended by Andrews and Divitorio, that passed by three to two vote.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Debitario?
No.
Councilman Divitorio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
No.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, old business, none, new business.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the budget for fiscal year 2021?
2022, Laura Hammond.
So we're doing three things to the budget. Number one, we're gonna amend the beginning fund balances as a result of the actual numbers in from the audit. Number two, we're gonna recognize $4 million of sales tax revenue in addition to what we have budgeted. And number three, we're gonna move $38,450, I believe the number is, to line item consultant services for the housing study. As I said before, that, uh, when we're doing the budget, we're working off of estimated numbers, and so once the audit comes in, we have final. And then, of course, our sales tax is coming in higher than projected, so we're gonna go ahead and recognize that revenue. It is not appropriating any dollars to anything, and the third one is, uh, the housing study. And we are seeking your approval.
Any other questions from anyone on the council? Anyone on the public? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Aye.
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 Final adoption number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the Hammond Unified Development Code to add the Suburban Highway Overlay District, Jeffrey Lewinberger.
I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, table this till the next meeting.
Let's do, let me make this recommendation.
Yeah.
He, he's recommended to change some of the streets that are on there, and if we're gonna issue a notice, let's change the street. So I, I, I'd suggest you first.
I make a motion to amend the, um, ordinance to, to the revised, um, streets.
Second.
As recommended.
As recommended.
So, did we remove a couple streets from that?
You just fixed what's unread.
Actually just changed the name, right, to.
Oh, I see, the red was, okay.
The red's gonna be the addition, yes.
All right, yeah.
Aye.
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 Now a motion to table till the next meeting with the request that a, uh, press release be issued to the Daily Star, the Advocate, and, uh, Actionist.
Second.
Um, I just wanna make a comment. I think there might've been, there's possibly, are y'all gonna stick to the proposed, because, I mean, there may be some changes. Like he brought up, uh, he brought up a, a point, which, you know, I, I need more information on, but he brought up a point about, uh, the setbacks being with, with the sidewalks and everything else. So the notification of people, is that gonna have that in detail, or just pretty much notifying? Do we need to make some changes on that, or, or evaluation with the Planning and Zoning Commission and you, or, or what? Okay, all right.
But they have to advertise what's in this, because that's what we've amended.
If it's gonna be a press release, the press release could include that it's, they're reviewing the build-back lines and invite public comment at the, at the meeting.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't notify them something different, then it changed, or whatnot in between, all right.
Yeah, I second.
That was the motion to table, and then to advertise, uh, issue a press, press release, or otherwise advertise this matter for the meeting.
Aye.
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 Uh, yeah, you got me. Uh, vote again.
You get to vote twice.
Introduction of ordinance in a set for public hearing. Introduction number one.
Introduction for, of an ordinance to Anix Ferris Family LLC property being a 0.181 acre portion of tract A dash one per save, survey by David Patterson. P L S dated 2/2/2022, located at 2307 West Thomas Street, to be zoned C H, and is in the City Council District Four. Z dash 2022, dash 02, dash 00099, Jeffrey Lewinberger.
Yes, this is an ordinance that was heard by the planning commission, um, at our last meeting, is it on here? Um, March 3rd, 20, 2022. Um, it was unanimously voted. Basically, with, what is happening here is, two cases came to the planning commission. One was, um, a re-division of lot lines, which was combining the two lots. A portion of that, a portion of the lot that was being combined to the lot is in the parish. It's about a 65 foot by 115 foot piece of property. And so that's being attached to the parcel that's there. We're talking about a parcel that's across from the shopping center that houses the Wynn Dixie. It's almost directly across from the Petco. But basically, they're gonna combine those two lots, well, they already have. Um, it went to the planning commission, they approved the combining, the combining of those two lots, and so now we just, um, they recommended approval of annexing that small 65 by 115-ish portion into the parish, and that map is in your packet, and we had a recommendation of approval unanimously from the planning commission.
Just some small items that I see. Who district this in?
This is my, this is my district.
Okay.
Your introduction, yeah.
So, look, I want you to, uh, I don't know if you have the same package in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's a lot of blanks on here. And I don't know if everybody have this and that.
Filing date, permit number, all that.
City planner.
Yeah.
I don't know if y'all blanks, but mine's is blank.
It's hyperlinked like that.
Yeah. So what I'm looking at, you know, uh, little things like this gonna create a problem.
We've been, that has definitely been one of the things that we've been trying to make sure that we fill out the paper applications to the T. With that said, the paper applications are old, and we are, that is one of the tasks that I'm trying to get down, so we can get those up to date, because they're a little antiquated, and they're a little, um, there's some information on there that we don't need, and there's some information on there that we do need. So we do need to get those applications updated, but yes, I completely agree, especially, uh, with my short history here, that getting the applications completed is an important thing.
Okay, like the amount paid, the check, uh, date paid, so, you know, I don't know if you still have the same one I have in front of me. Permit, uh, filing date, all these are blank on mine's.
Yeah, but, and they were, yes.
Okay.
When we, we, we receive the applications, and, and there's the bad habit of just entering it in directly to our permitting software, um, because we're moving into an electronic age and not a, um, software age, or in not a paper age, and so that is a, a fall on the staff. And when I started, that was basic, that was definitely something that was mentioned that we, we really need to focus on doing. And so I believe we, we, we have at that point, so.
All right, well, that's been said, since this is, uh, Councilman, uh, Sam District, I'm gonna let him talk about it.
Yeah, no, um, that, that, the rezoning, that's just, uh, all y'all doing is the, the highlight in red, right?
It's not a rezoning.
I mean, um, annexing, I'm sorry, yeah, annexing, just in red, okay, all right. So, yeah, so y'all not messing with any of the houses on the residential side. Okay, cool, that's it, yep. Lot of work, yeah.
Any more questions from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to introduce.
I mean, introduce.
Excuse me. Public hearing will be scheduled for March 22nd. I'm sorry, roll call.
We're all jumping ahead.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divitorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Public hearing will be scheduled for March 22nd, 2022, at 5:30.
Okay, uh, Mr. Matthews, I'd like for you to come to the mic when you say that, for everybody in the city can hear what's taking place there.
Introduction number two.
And I will say, they didn't put their, the, the name of the business on the application, so we're not putting, putting that out there. May I introduce?
Yes.
Introduction, introduction of an ordinance to grant an expanded conditional use E C U on a lot being 0.407 acres in accordance with a survey by William J. Bodine Junior dated 2/9/2022, requested by Anthony and Joyce Cox, located at 1106 South Pine Street, Z dash 2022, dash 02, dash 00098, Jeffrey?
And this was a, um, an expanded conditional use for the property that, um, is listed in the packet, um, at 1106 South Pine. Basically, that area does allow duplexes, um, and she wants to put a duplex, or the applicant wants to put a duplex on that property. But the applicant wants, wants, um, the residence on one side and a hair salon on the other, and, um, the applicant's here, if, if you would like to speak to her as well. So in order to do that, we offered an expanded conditional use to just allow for, which an expanded conditional use just runs with the property owner, um, as it goes. And it would allow for, on one side, a duplex, um, and on the other side, a hair salon that the applicant wants to, um, work out of, so.
What, can I ask, what are we expanding the use of, the ability to have a duplex, or the, or a business?
Duplexes are allowed, um, in that area, so we're just expanding for the, um, for one of the sides to have a hair salon in it.
So is it, is it not zoned to be able to have a business there?
No, it's, it's, it's a.
Issue?
Conditional use, all right? Just a conditional use for that particular business?
Yep, yes.
It's not a matter of being a duplex, that has nothing to do with it.
No, 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 I was just letting you know that.
Yes.
That was the plan.
What district this in?
Um, we are in District Three.
Okay. Another thing, uh, you know, now I have to look at things a little careful now. Site information, do you have this on your paper? Right here?
Yeah.
Okay, you see what's on there, huh? 905 Mooney Avenue. Okay.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, okay, uh, site description, uh, property front, Mooney Avenue, just south of Liveo. Uh, and see, it's the little things.
It is.
That could get us in trouble. Site address, I got it highlighted, it's not on there, uh, city planner, it's signed.
Oh, you're talking about the application?
Yes, the application. File-in date, see how we have something on one, and we don't have it on the other one? And, and this where the conflicts come in at, because when I request something, when I ask for something, and somehow this one might find it, that one might not find it, that's why we need all the correct information.
And I completely agree. I, within the last month or two, we've definitely been making sure that that gets done.
Okay.
With everything that's been going on.
Bottom line, if the information's not on it, don't sign it.
Yeah.
If you can't find the individual wanting to do the project, until you do, or they come back, don't push it forward.
Exactly. I'm getting to the point where I'm finally starting to get into a workflow, so when people come into my office, I'm able to sit down and talk with them, and start filling out the applications, and making sure we're getting everything in line. So it is a learning curve on my part, and I apologize for that.
Okay, did you write, uh, this in my district, by the way?
Yes.
Did you write over there to see exactly where they, uh, plan on putting it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone else on the council?
Do we need to introduce it with revisions to that staff report, or does that matter? No.
I'll revise the staff report for the actual.
For the hyperlink for the next one?
Yeah.
Make a motion to introduce?
Second. Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
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 Gonna get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Now, now Brad, hold up, hold up. Brad been sitting here, and he have something to say about it. So do we say it now, or do we say it later on?
You're introducing it, I guess, right now to, for a public hearing next time, right? But I mean, if he wants to say something.
Is it about an agenda item, or something different?
Uh-uh, just this here.
Oh, oh.
Okay, it's already been passed, so I guess you have to come back to the next one. All right. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn. Adjourn.
I'll invade that.
Need to adjourn.